There, yours worked. So great.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So now we're recording and transcribing. Um, welcome aboard everyone um to the special town meeting walkthrough. You have several visiting dignitaries with us, so to speak, from several of the boards and committees in towns who are sponsoring articles. Um, I'll let them introduce themselves as they speak. Just a quick um run through for tonight. I'm Tom Morally, by the way. I am the town moderator. I'm the one who's going to be conducting this special night on Monday, and so I will be conducting tonight as well. Um, my goal for these things is to provide a forum for people to kind of clear up any questions they had about the proceedings of town meeting, what's going to be voted on? Um, what articles do if a yes vote is supported by the townspeople? Any sort of procedural questions people might have, that sort of thing, what, what, I am not intending this to be as a form to advocate for or against these articles. Because we have, you know, we have plenty of space to talk about that with each other on social media, plenty of um opportunity to discuss this and debate this at the town meeting itself. Tonight's goal is simply clear up any questions so that people can go into town meeting more informed about what's actually happening. Now, I, I was listening a little bit. Um, Carl, did you said you, you said you had to leave?
I, yes, the Conservation Commission meeting is happening at the same time. Uh, Susan Cahalyn's running it. I'd like to hear those two, the article nine and 10 are the two Concom ones. I also wanted to hear the um accessory uh rent building unit one.
Okay.
If we can get those.
Absolutely. Does anyone have an issue with taking these out of order, discussing these out of order? Um, starting with nine and 10 and um the EDU one is article.
So I'm going to share my screen here and we'll start, we'll start with article nine. We can do the um Conservation Commission one.
Perfect. Which one's the, which one's the ADU? Okay, that's article 11, right?
Yeah, so we'll just go nine, 10, 11 right through.
Perfect. That works for me. If it works for everybody else.
Yeah.
All right. So let's start with uh article nine, which is sponsored by the Concom. I'll give I'll give Carl the opportunity to speak to it first and foremost. You wanted to, Carl?
Yeah, um. This, my, my understanding from Isabella and Jeremy that this is more paperwork than anything else. We're not actually coming to the town to ask to spend money. This is tidying up uh con- conservation restrictions and making sure that in the future, if the town wants to spend money, uh we will be able to do so.
Uh, that's
So, so this is accepting an easement. So uh can you see the, can you see the map on my screen right now? I, I was hoping I shared the correct window. Um, so the uh, the red portion, this is article nine. So the red portion is privately held land. Um, and then um outside of that, where you see the rest of the trail, uh or rest of the blue is where there's a trail and we, we want to link um this trail network to town owned land. So we are being granted an easement onto privately held land um to link up trails with trails on town owned land. Um, so both of these articles do a similar thing. Uh, it's just two separate parcels. Um, there's actually an article later in the warrant which would authorize select board in a fiscal year. So in fiscal year 25 and we would accept it each year. We, we presented to be accepted each year at annual town meeting to say we can accept easements without a monetary impact without going to town meeting. Um, so hopefully things like this in the future, when there's no dollar value associated with it, we can just have select board um accept them. Uh, but what this is, is um accepting the granting of an easement on private property for town use uh to create that trail.
So my understanding is that this is essentially a gift. Correct?
Correct. And there are CPA funds already appropriated for the trail design. Um, so there's no dollar value um and nothing being asked of the town to appropriate any additional funds.
Okay, thank you. And this would be a simple majority vote. Uh, fifty percent of the people in attendance, it passes. All right. Any, any further questions on this or any questions rather on this article, article nine? All right.
In, in terms, in terms of what happens Monday night, you would you're, you're sitting up on the stage. I expect I will be in the audience. At what point do I go to the microphone on and, and, and what exactly would I be reading out?
So the, the way it works is um I will take a motion from the sponsoring party.
That would be me.
That would be you. So you'd come up to the mic when it's time to speak. Um, then someone, then you'll wait for someone to second it. When someone seconds it and then we get into discussion, at which point you will you will discuss the
section.
Read the discussion session, section, then open it up for um participation and debate.
Now, do I read the, the motion section and I start by saying I move that the, because in the past I've heard people saying reading something and at the very end saying, and I so move.
That's typically when it's a multiple sentence sort of thing. Um, so you say I move and it's one sentence. And then if you get on to like a, a long dated thing, then at the end of the second or third sentence, you end up saying, and I so move to
Okay.
To like kind of title up. But these motions, long as they are and run on sentence as they are, they are one sentence.
And, and do I read the mend and tax assessor partial three dash one eight nine dash one three one? Do I include that?
Yes, please.
Uh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so I read the, I'll, I'll practice reading that over the next couple of days to make sure I don't stumble over them.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, any, any other questions on article nine? All right, moving on to article 10.
So um functionally, this is the, this is the same or um kind of uh mechanically, this is the same thing. This is um accepting uh an easement on private property. So I'm going to get flip back to the map here and uh a kind of point of information, these maps have been supplied to Dan Byer, who's going to be running our multimedia for the evening. So these will be projected up during the discussion.
Okay.
Um, so as you can see here, that green area uh is Muddy Brook Conservation Area. Um, sorry, there's multiple things named Muddy Brook. It's Muddy Brook something. Um, and the red area is where we'd be accepting the trail easement. So um this would just go out and, and, and link um to town owned property. And again, it's private owned property. We'd be accepting easement and we have CPA funds appropriated um for tr- trail work.
Awesome. And, and again, this is also another gift.
Correct. There is, there is no dollar value associated with this.
And yeah, and so this would be a sim- another vote that's a simple majority vote. Um, fifty percent or plus one. So um, any questions about this one? I mean, it's functionally the same as the last one we discussed, so I anticipate there won't be many. Okay, seeing nobody. I'm going to move on. Again, uh, I don't think I made this clear. If you do have a question, you, please feel free to raise your hand using the, the raise hand function. And now I'll make sure you can ask your question after we get a chance to discuss the actual article. Um. Okay, article 11.
So there is a, I don't believe there's anyone from the planning board here tonight, so I'm going to take this on. Um, this is uh um, so the um uh state passed passed legislation um which allowed accessory dwelling units uh by right. Um, so coming uh in February 2025 will be allowed by right, but it gives a small amount of discretion to localities. Um, essentially how many ADUs per existing dwelling unit um will allow up to two. Um, whether will allow, allow increased square footage. So right now, um the maximum square footage is 900 square feet or half the size of the um primary dwelling unit, whatever's less, um and then 1,200 square feet by special permit. Um, and then uh whether to allow temporary rentals. So uh the zoning bylaw review committee, which is going through the entirety of the zoning bylaw review, zoning bylaws, um decided to limit ADUs accessory dwelling units to one per dwelling um to uh exceed 900 square feet only by special permit up to 1,200 square feet and to not allow temporary rentals uh within the ADU. So this is something that is going to happen um regardless because of the state uh enabling statute. And this is the uh zoning bylaw review committee's uh interpretation um on how to proceed with this going forward.
Okay. Thank you. Um. I, I see Carl has a question. I, I actually also have a question.
Yep. Uh, temporary rentals, that means like you can't do the uh the, the online rental stuff?
Yeah, you can't Airbnb it out. Uh, there, there's a um, there's a definition in state statute what a short term rental is. I don't know it. Um, and perhaps it's in the, in the text here, but um the kind of qualitative assessment from the zoning bylaw review committee is that it does not allow temporary rentals. So it would
Go on.
Um, yeah, so short term rentals are usually less than 90 days, as I understand the um, the interpretation.
And, and my second question is am I, when it says we're limiting it to one per dwelling, does that mean building lot or could I have one ADU in my basement and a second ADUs as a second structure like a, an external barn?
Um, I think ADU, so we'll, we can go through this. So the te- the text of the proposed bylaw is here. Um. It would be um an additional unit outside the square, outside the footprint of your, of your home. So having something in your basement is not an accessory dwelling unit.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Um. My question, so in the, the motion itself, it, it just it, it says that it wants to vote to amend the zoning bylaws. It says with sections, but it doesn't really include the text. Is that kosher?
Yeah, that was um, that was the uh I don't, I write very few of these, if any, by myself. So that was um what council wrote for us.
Okay. Okay, I mean.
There was actually, so I got an email this afternoon um on a small change, so um, the motion will be, and I'll update this and make sure planning has it. I'm, I moved the town vote to amend the town amended zoning bylaws by adding new section seven or take any other action relative there too. So it's actually taking out the definition and table requirements and rolling that into other action relative there too. Um, and just saying add a new section. Um, so it's actually making the motion a little bit simpler.
Okay, sounds good to me. Um, and so then that, the language is in, in the following slide that we just looked at.
Right, we will not have to read. So it is, you know, one, two,
Right.
three, three, three full pages of text, which will not have to be read um into the, into the record now.
Will they be printed out and available for people to read during town meeting?
I am going, so this entire document that I'm going through here, sorry for the jumping around, this entire document that I'm going through here that has the motion and the discussion and all that. Uh, my anticipation is to print these out and have these available.
Yep. Okay, so that's the reference that people will have during the meeting.
Yeah, I am, I was always very frustrated in my own town meetings when I just had the articles in front of me. Um, and there was no dollar value. There was, there's nothing associated with it. Um, and I, as a person who is not well versed in town versus city government at the time, uh, I, I felt it was an inaccessible process. So I'm hopeful to be able to uh communicate more specificity and more clarity uh to folks who are voting on stuff.
Can I ask a question about this?
Absolutely.
Um, did the warrant that was mailed to everybody, which I do not have, I have in another room? Did that contain the adding section 1.02, section 3.01 in table A?
Yes, it includes. So that first part, so everything in between, everything in between article 11 and motion, uh, that was what was in the, in the warrant.
And contrary, contrary to what the lawyer told you, Jeremy, I would recommend leaving the wording as is. Because as a former moderator, if you say only to add a new section 7.1 and don't mention the other things, I'm going to stand up on the floor and challenge that is outside the scope of the motion.
Um, yeah, I'm hopeful that uh or take any action relative there too, means
That doesn't cover it.
Change the definition. Um, I, I'm, yeah, I'm going to defer to counsel.
The action there too refers to the voting, not changing the text.
I will, um, I will re- I will review this
Well, it was on the warrant mailed to everybody, so you gave sufficient notice. But the motion doesn't say you're doing more than, you're doing less in the motion than the warrant said, so you're okay. But you, if you are in fact adding those sections, it should be in the motion.
Um, I mean, I talked to council before town meeting. Um. And you know, these motions can be edited before the meeting as long as within the scope of the articles and, and I'm going to discuss with town council. Um, because you know, I I am of the mind that you know, if you are adding definitions, that generally has been laid out, but I'm, I'm going to discuss with council and see council's thought and, and listen to their reasoning because you know, I, I do think it could, I do think the argument could be made that it is part of taking action relative there too.
That's not what those words mean.
Okay. I will.
Those, those words refer to the vote.
Right. Well, I'm going to make the decision about the scope on the night of town meeting.
Okay, well, just, just tell the, just tell the council that her favorite assessor is going to challenge it if you shorten the wording.
Okay. I, like I said, I'll, I'll discuss, I'll discuss, I'll discuss with town council and
I'll run down and we'll get shot down, but I'm going to make the point anyway.
Okay, it, and as you're right. And again, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, Kevin. I just, I want, I want
Lawyers only give opinions. Judges make rulings.
Right. And the town meeting makes decisions, so. Um. I'll, I'll discuss with council and, and listen to their reasoning and you know, I'm sure we'll, we'll put something, I'm, I'm sure this article sponsors will put a motion in place that will uh will be to my satisfaction. So.
Thank you, Tom.
No problem. Any other, any other thoughts or questions on this article? Okay.
Thanks for taking those out of order. I'm going to drop off now and head off for my other meeting.
Thank, thank you for coming, Carl.
Thank you.
Um. Okay, going back to article one. Oh, by the way, one thing I forgot to mention about that last article, because it is um amending the zoning bylaws, that will need a two thirds majority vote in order to pass. Okay, moving on to article one. Um, to see the town vote to raise and appropriate and or transfer some of money from available funds to pay bills of a prior year. Um. Elena has her hand raised. Did you want to speak to this article or is it a question about the articles?
I have a procedural question.
Yes.
So, so will you be reading each warrant article? Uh, because I know sometimes it goes right to the motions and sometimes the moderator reads the article. So I guess procedural question.
I will have the article up on the screen behind me. Um, and I I do think that's sufficient.
Okay, um, so someone would just make the motion as soon as you say we're on to article one and you have it posted.
Yeah, you know, give people a chance to look at the article.
Okay.
I, I don't think I have to read every single article, then have a motion, especially when some of these motions are large motions.
Yes, yes. Oh, I, I agree. I just wanted to clarify so there isn't that like awkward moment of me waiting for you to say it and you waiting for me to say it.
Absolutely. And I know, I know I have in the past. Um, you know, I, I think after doing a few of these, I kind of have my own.
Right. I've seen it happen both ways. That's all. That's why I asked.
Um, yeah, my, my thinking is as long as it's behind me, um, for people to review, we can move on. And you know, I'll ask for the sponsor to make a motion. Um, and they can do so. Um, and now we have second and then discussion. Just we, we don't have to wait for me to read every single one. It's my, is my thinking, especially when we have so many.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, um.
So with this one
Speaking this?
Yeah, please. Uh, so those are prior years, a pretty common thing for us to um address at special and annual town meetings. Um, so um services that were rendered prior to June 30th, um, we have until uh July 15th to make any sort of um budgetary movements and then encumber if we, if we know there's things coming. Um, and then we have until September to pay those things. Uh, there are a number of bills. If we don't encumber them by July 15th, uh, with, then we need to come to town meeting and ask, ask for the ability to pay a prior year expense with the current year appropriation. Uh, I will say we were uh, had a series of interim TAs uh and actually at the end of the fiscal year, there was a week without a TA. Um, the finance director resigned. We had an interim treasurer collector. We didn't have an executive assistant at the select board. So $15,000 is a lot of money. Um, it's not a lot of money uh considering all of those factors. So these were things that kind of fell through the cracks. So um, I have um the, the vendors, the amounts and the description. So Murphy Hesse Tumi and Lahem is um our town council and our labor council. Um. I've said this at three or four meetings now, uh, it's not uncommon for law firms to be woefully behind in billing us. Uh, Beaver Solutions does um uh Beaver Management, um upon leveling, um, part of that invoice was paid. Bartlett Tree Experts, um, they did a, a um a foliage treatment and, and an assessment. Springbrook is our um financial management software. There's a migration between uh the former system and this. Community Solar. I know this is a big one, but what Community Solar is, we end up getting a, a credit um from utility. So we get a large revenue. And then Community Solar, who owns the pieces, um, bills us for a percentage of those revenues. So that $3,200 bill is associated with probably like a $3,800 um revenue to the town. So it's net positive. It's something we owe all the time. Uh, that vendor in particular was getting sent directly to the former executive assistant. Um, so that's why we, we didn't get that one at time. Ready, refresh $5.80. I don't have a great explanation. Don't quite know what, but it's $5. Uh, Neil Harvey and Sons is a um uh, there was a demolition um relative to a town property that was run through the former uh interim TA. Um, and that communication just quite, didn't quite happen. So um, I know $15,000 is a lot of money and we want to pay our bills on time. Um, but considering everything um that kind of happened at the end of the fiscal year, this is a relatively small amount and actually in line with previous uh special and annual town meetings in terms of bills of a prior year.
Okay.
And uh finance committee unanimously recommends this.
Um, so because this is uh bills of a prior year, um this actually is going to require a nine tenths vote. Just to be clear, um
Yeah.
His bills of prior do require nine tenths vote. And I guess my question is, and I'm only asking this because it's happened in surrounding communities. Um, what happens if this motion fails?
Um. I haven't, I, I've worked for one town and one city and at least in the town, this hasn't failed. Uh, but that was with RTM, not open town meeting. Um. I don't quite know. I'd have to go with council, but I, I think we would uh, we would call a special town meeting just for this one article. Um.
Tom, legally you can't pay the bills until town meeting votes.
Yeah, that, yeah, that was the
No, those bills cannot be paid until you take it to another vote.
Yeah, that was, that was the crux of, of, of my point, that we would have to um call another special time meeting before we would pay the bills.
So. I mean, this, this, these balances would stay open until these this vote happens and you know, services might not be provided if that was the case.
Yeah, and these, these are, to be clear, these are services that were already rendered and already approved on a, on a budgetary and procurement basis. Um, but it was the timing of the um, of the um, the bills that made it a point.
Right. Um. Lena? Has her hand up?
It's a, yeah, another procedural question about this one. So if somebody objects to a specific line item, I mean, does that, do these ever get separated into multiple motions?
Um. I, I
So Kevin's shaking his head.
In forty years, I've never seen one of these defeated.
I, I could, I could, I could separate, separate theoretically if I thought that something was going to be controversial, but I'm not inclined to do so because I don't believe any of these are. Um. If I, if I hear differently perhaps, but I don't think any going to be controversial, so I'm
I haven't Yeah, I haven't heard anything specific. Just, you know.
Someone doesn't want us to pay the
Tales from other towns.
If someone doesn't want us to pay the lawyers and wants me to separate that out, just reach out to me and I'll think about it. But I'm not inclined to do so as of right now.
Thank you.
All right, Tom, if you're, if you're good, we'll move on to the next couple of articles.
Article two.
So the, the next handful of articles are about appropriating into various stabilization accounts. Um, so this is into our general purpose stabilization, what folks call our rainy day fund. Um, so uh, the balance in this fund right now is 1.146 million, which equates to about 4.7% of general fund expenditures. This is asking to appropriate an additional $500,000 into it. So that's a, that's a, that's a big jump, right? Um, so that would be uh bring us to 1.6 million or about 6.7% of general fund expenditures. We don't have approved financial management policies right now. Um, but a my, what I am targeting and what is in my draft financial management policies for the select board to review and approve um is between six and eight percent of general fund expenditures in your stabilization, in our stabilization account. So um you know, 4.7% is, is good, a little light. Anything kind of above in the eight, nine percent, there's a big opportunity cost. So this is to um uh, you know, stabilize town operations in terms, in times of economic tumult. Um, so this is a, this is a good planning for, for years ahead. Um, and for, for times when state revenues tank, when local um, local receipts tank in, in various ways. And to be able to still provide the same level of town services to stabilize operations. Um, it's, it's good future planning. And at a time, I think this is a great time to, to talk a little bit about um the situation in which um all of these articles exist. Um, so um the um uh, the certified free cash for um, for the town this year is $2.4 million, um, which is a pretty large amount. Um, and we're talking about um some serious one-time drivers, some things like motor vehicle excise tax. Um, there was an additional commitment in the fiscal year. Um, there was some unspent revenue from the prior year, $250,000, $240,000 from the prior year. Um. So we're going to talk a lot about appropriations for one-time capital expenditures. So I wanted to talk about what made up this $2.4 million in free cash. Um. So $250,000 in motor vehicle excise tax that was collected um above and beyond um what we would have expected. And it seems a little bit of a timing issue. We would have expected that in fiscal year 2023. Uh, ambulance revenue was $150,000 over budget, um, which means uh kind of our um And marginal costs for operating the ambulances is also going to be a bit higher. Tax liens redeemed, uh, this is property tax we should have, quote unquote, you know. Collected in prior years. Um. Cannabis local auction sales tax was eighty thousand dollars higher. So this was unbudgeted, um, and I plan to build that into our twenty twenty-six budget. Uh, but our total excess receipts were about nine hundred thousand dollars over our our initial anticipation. We had some expense drivers on the local budget, um, some police overtime, um, some some building projects. Some highway salaries, some Board of Health Services. So we had about nine hundred thousand dollars in department turnbacks. And like I said, um, two hundred and forty two thousand dollars in unspent free cash from the prior year. So that's really one time in nature. Um, and then three hundred thousand dollars in increased available funds based on reduced deficits. So that was um. Things largely driven by chapter ninety. Chapter ninety is reimbursable program. If you don't submit reimbursement by the end of the fiscal year. Or the period that they give you afterwards, um, your free cash gets dinged, so to speak. So we corrected that between fiscals twenty-three and fiscal twenty-four. And we got credit back. Um, so this was money we had available um, in fiscal twenty-three but for that deficit. So so that should be considered one time as well. And here's a, here's a short um. Short history of certified free cash. So this is, this is well outside the norm um, of what the town has experienced. So that's why there's there's so many articles with um, or a a healthy amount of articles with. Um, appropriations from free cash into uh, one-time uses and then a few into um, ongoing uses. Because much of this is also structural. Um, so this is our first free cash article. Not all the free cash articles will be this in depth. Uh, but I wanted to make sure that I framed the future discussion on on what free cash looks like right now.
Awesome. Um. I think we have a uh, hand raised. Is that Mike Goddard? Gracing his hand. I just see MG.
Yes, that's Mike Goddard. Okay.
Sorry, I think uh, the mic didn't, uh, you can hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Okay, I I was wondering, uh, Jeremy has a great overview. I'm wondering if we actually lead with that, just, you know, prophesy, because we will always be asked the question of. What what will the balance be, right? So if we can level set so where we are, we will end up if, you know, based on passage of the monetary articles, Jeremy. I think that'll probably make the discussion around the individual articles that much smoother. So I don't know if we could actually provide a sort of a a starting and ending point before we get into any of the monetary articles, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I I I currently have that document and that's kind of how I've been thinking of them as we went through the presentation to select board and ultimately into the warrant. So that's, that's, that's an easy thing to to crystallize and and provide and 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 share with town meeting.
Um, I I'll allow you to do that as part of the discussion for the um, for the first free cash article.
Right, I I think.
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm suggesting, Tom, is actually possibly more formally give it a quick update on the financials. And before we get into any, so rather than tie it to the first free cash article. I give an overview of of where where we are and where we'll be. At 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 the conclusion if if these articles pass. I just, it's kind of like the capital program, Jeremy. At some point, we get to provide the town an overview of what the capital program is and where it is and what it looks like, things like that. And. A lot of times town meeting will provide a a a, outside of an article, a a discussion of the program. Before you get into the 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 warrant articles associated with the programs, that makes sense. So I was just wondering.
Does the discussion have to be tied, discussion has to be tied to an article, right? We can't just.
That's my my thinking. I mean, I I don't. When we are discussing something like this, it's tied to an article. Generally. Well, because because it's, you know, this, the town meetings sort of agenda is the warrant and.
It's literally tied to about thirty of the articles. You know what I mean? I'm just saying to kind of. I, however you want to do it, I just, I'm not sure. I'm not sure you have to introduce an article, then have a broad overview of all the other articles, you know, you could. I I don't know that to be true, but I would assume you could provide information.
I mean. We've, we've discussed other information pertinent to other articles when we we discussed one article before. Like, so if if something, you know. I I know we, like, for instance, like, just using the example, like, there were several articles, I believe, regarding the um, senior community center. We we had discussion that related to all of them when we we first brought up the taric, the topic. And, you know, I'm absolutely willing to look at taking all those articles in succession. Um, I just, I don't know that. You know, having this e- essentially being able to discuss the article before the meeting actually. Begins is appropriate.
Tom?
Yes.
It's quite common in other towns that the select board or finance committee give a financial overview prior to Article One being called.
Okay.
So that that sets the tone of the meeting. Um, and it doesn't have to relate to a specific article. You know, you could say in order to help people understand. How we're funding the articles on the warrant. You know, Jeremy will give, you know, five-minute overview of the financial picture or something like that.
I support doing this.
Is that, is that Mike?
That was Mike Crager, yep.
Okay. All right, if, I mean, if. The finance committee and select board are on board and, you know. I I'm I'm open to that.
I think in terms of the uh, effect on voters at town meeting, whether it happens prior to Article One. Or as we're discussing the context of Article Two, I I I think they're going to have the same takeaway. Um, so however, you know, you as moderator are most comfortable, um, I think, I think we have the same effect at the end.
Yeah, I I mean, I. We can do it beforehand. That's fine with me. We can do it before Article One and as sort of a. Here's where we're at, kind of update.
Great.
Sorry, I was gonna say, because we're putting money into stabilization, this is a simple majority vote. It would be if we were taking it out, that would have to be. Um, two thirds.
So. Article three, if I can move, I don't, I don't want to steal your meeting, Tom, but I'm.
Yeah, no, that'd be my guess.
Thank you. Um, so we have a capital expenditure account, essentially a special purpose stabilization, um, enabled through a special act. That allows us to contribute one hundred thousand dollars per year. Um, so this is because, again. It's important to frame the conversation ahead of time because we have two point four million dollars in free cash. Um, we're um. Appropriating the the maximum allowable by the special act, the hundred thousand dollars would bring our capital expenditure balance to four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. That's, you know, I think these next couple of ones are all good future planning sorts of items. And the finance committee unanimously recommends that. Article four, in the same vein, uh, OPEB liability trust. So OPEB is other post-employment benefits, which is essentially healthcare costs for retirees. The town pays seventy-five percent of the premium for retirees. Um. This is something that municipalities um, and counties across the country are dealing with right now. As um, Gatsby, the Government Accountability Standards Board, put out um, bulletins regarding how. We account for OPEB liability and now bond writing agencies are asking us about this specifically in ways that they weren't. Uh, you know, ten years ago when I was a bond writing analyst. Um, so. We, along with everybody else, have a very, very paltry funding ratio, right? We're at three percent or something like that. So our net OPEB liability at our last measurement date was about four point eight million dollars. Um, and with this appropriation of fifty thousand dollars, should it be successful, we'd have a a a net or a um. A asset of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the fund. So again, this is a, this is very much an investment in the future. This is something that um, we're paying in sort of a pay-go um, aspect right now. The seventy-five percent of retiree health benefits are just on the general fund. Um, and the hope being that as this trust fund grows, it generates enough interest and dividend income to be able to. Um, to be able to pay those retiree health benefits. Uh, think of it similar to a pension program. Um, so that's where we're at right now.
Again, awesome. Thank you, Jeremy. Um, any questions about this?
The finance committee also unanimously recommends this article.
Awesome. So see no questions. That's a majority vote. Moving on to the next one.
Uh, so yeah, this one's a little hairier. Uh, this is Article Five. This is um, a. Um, an article tied to the debt exclusion relative to the mended senior and community center. Um. The men in select board has um, indicated their preference to pass over this article. But as yet to make an official vote. Um, so the board will be vote, the board will be meeting uh, Monday before. Um, before town meeting. Um, and considering whether to endorse as a board officially passing over this. So uh, there's two motions here just because of the way we're at. Um, but it is. I I definitely try not to speak for the board because I'm, that's not my role. Um, but uh, yeah, Elena, why don't you speak for the board? You can, you can do that much better than I can.
Well, I I guess I do, again, I have a procedural question. So the board discussed this at our last meeting. And as Jeremy said, we did not actually vote to pass over this, but there was not. There was, there were no comments suggesting that any of the board would be opposed to passing it over. But, you know, we cannot, we do not actually know until we have that formal vote. So we're planning to do that. And I think, um, I guess. I do have the procedural question about when we pass over, um, like. Would there be a motion to pass it over and then and then followed by a discussion of why? Because I think it's important to say something about the vote that failed. So I s- I wonder about procedural when we can say those things.
So, so when we're talking, just like every other um, article. You know, the motion would be, I motion to pass this over. And then discussion, then there's a point for discussion and and generally, um. Generally, the sponsor of the article makes a quick comment about why there it is being passed over. Um, if, that that would be the point to to.
Right.
Discuss.
Okay, so in this case, if I wa- I mean, I would potentially make the motion to pass over this article. And then you would say, you would say discussion. And then I would, should the select board vote along these lines? I would say the select board recommends passing over it and then give the the added context of the the recent um, ballot question.
Correct.
Okay. So I mean, I I had, uh, I had expressed an interest in saying that the, the town is passing over this. Because there was a, the ballot question failed, but there is an interest in pursuing another um, solution to this problem. So I wanted, but I don't know, like, I wanted to put in that the that um. That we expect that the town will be continuing to investigate this question. Because I think there is some question about whether it's a, you know, done deal, like, we're done voting on this. But I wanted to um. Leave that open to say that this proposal was voted down. We're not voting on this proposal. But the town has the opportunity to come up with a new proposal in the future.
I I think, I think that's okay. I mean, you're, you're discussing why it's getting passed over in the.
Okay.
Possibility of bringing it back in some form in a future meeting. So that, to me, that's within the scope of the article.
Okay, great. That's what I was hoping, but I figured it would, you know, you're the run, the one who will be running this meeting.
Um, Phil Sibley has a, his hand raised?
Yeah, it's just to follow on to what Elena was saying.
I'm I'm sorry, you're very, your voice is very low.
Just to follow on to what Elena was saying.
Can you, can you move closer to the mic, Phil? We can, we can barely hear you.
Integrated mic, can you still hear me? Can you hear me?
No.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, there we go.
There you go.
Kind of pushed the right button. Uh, just to follow on. If someone else wants to make comments after her comment, is it still open here floor?
When, when an article is being passed over, um. I I barely go right to a vote. Um, of passing it over. I mean, and it's not to say someone can defeat that motion. Um, but I would, I would probably not it, go with further discussion on that if the motion is to pass over. Um, we have a hand being raised by Mike, by whoever MK is.
Mike Crager.
Oh, Mike Crager, okay.
Yeah, my, I guess my opinion on this is not the point to uh, debate. Future actions. This is about the article on the floor as written. Let's get through the article on the floor and move on to the gazillion other articles that we have.
Right.
Yeah, I wasn't looking for a debate, uh, Michael. I was just looking for, uh. Can just have a discussion.
Yeah, I I recognize that, but even just the, you know, keep, keep continuing the discussion, like, you're, it's going to start garnering. Other people coming to the floor and it will end up turning into a discussion. So it ends up making Tom's job really hard. So I'm just, I'm, I'm concerned of how much of this is going to turn into a debate on the floor.
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, right now, I'm, I'm, I will allow the motion, assuming the select board does. Um. Vote to pass this over. I will, I'll, I'll allow the motion to pass over a second. Um, as part of discussions, the the why and the possibility of coming back at a future meeting in some form. Um, and then I'm going to move to a vote. I'm not going to allow further discussion beyond that because it, it's a motion to pass over and we we don't. I I don't think we need to have discussion on that. Now, like I said, you know. The emotion to pass over does not have to be passed. Um, I'm I'm going to say it, it usually is. And if it, if it is. You know, if the motion passes over does fail, then. Um. Or or someone wanted to amend that motion rather on the floor, that there's a possi- well, possibility of that, sorry.
And I I will add, Elena has her hand up, uh.
Yeah, ab- absolutely, Elena.
Oh, I guess I just wanted to know. So, so the finance committee did also vote on this, although actually I. I have trouble interpreting the finance committee does not recommend, that the finance committee does not recommend the original. Motion or does not recommend passing over.
Does not recommend the original motion. Right.
Okay.
Does not recommend the article. So they, the, the finance committee did not uh, contemplate motions at all. The finance committee contemplated the article. Uh, and it did not recommend the, so voted two to four.
Fantastic.
Uh, to recommend the article.
And again.
Okay, so to. Okay.
Yeah, the the process as I laid out, if if it is, in fact, the motion is going to be to recommend to pass it over. Um, allow motion, allow discussion of why it's getting passed over as well as the appetite to bring it back in some form. As part of that. Um, and then I'm going right to a vote.
Okay, right. So because then we don't need the finance committee recommendation because it would not be voting on the original article.
Right, unless, you know, and, you know, we have had people amend the motion to pass it over before. On the floor, uh, they're not, usually not successful. Um, so I'll just leave it at that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, Article Six. Um, and sorry, sorry, one more thing. Article Five. Um. The motion to pass over. Would um. Would be a majority vote um, for the actual borrowing, where it to be the, in its original form, would have to be a two-third vote. Okay, Article Six.
Um, so this is what I alluded to with um, Conservation Commission Chair um, Hummel before, um, the Mullen Rule. Um, so this is uh, MGL, this is accepting MGL, chapter thirty-nine, section twenty-three D. Which says, uh, if there's public hearings and uh, commission, uh, committee or commission member uh, misses uh, public hearing. Uh, they can attest that they watched the transcript or read um, the, the um. Minutes on and still vote on the outcome of the public hearing thereafter. So this is important to boards that have public hearings that span multiple meetings. And a member may have missed one meeting, but as long as they um, testify that they have um, been, you know. Brought up to speed through, through one way or the other, um, that they can still vote on the outcome of the public hearing.
Thank you. Any further questions on this? All right, uh, moving on, Article Nine. All right, uh, moving on, Article Nine, or sorry, Article Seven, and that last one's a majority vote.
So these, these, uh, these next two are uh, assessor, a Board of Assessor sponsored articles. So I'll leave that um, to the Board of Assessors and our principal assessor.
Okay, uh, basically, uh, uh, when the here, the so-called Heroes Act was passed uh, over the summer by the legislature and signed into law by the governor uh, to benefit veterans. It included uh, two provisions um, to increase the exemptions if veterans can earn. Uh, in um, both would start in fiscal year twenty-six. But we wanted the town meeting to, to vote to accept as early as possible. Uh, Article Seven basically would take the existing um, exemption. And uh, it's also important to put this in context, the legislature has not increased the amount of these exemptions. Um, literally in more than um, I'm going to say fifteen to twenty years. So they haven't kept pace with inflation. What Article Seven would do is increase um, the benefits in exemptions clause twenty-two, twenty-two, capital A, capital B, C, and E. Um, by cost of living adjustment every year. And the Department of Revenue would notify us at the beginning of a calendar year what that is. And um, basically it would go up every year. Um, we can't project the cost because we don't know what the Department of Revenue says the coal is going to be. Um, on that, but the, the funding would come out of the uh, assessors overlay account just as it does now. So this will be a way of giving um, uh, the veterans an increase. The way I like to explain this is, you know, if you got a thousand dollars off your tax bill fifteen or twenty years ago when your tax bill was probably a third of what it is today, uh, due to value increases. It probably made a significant dent in your tax bill, but if you get a thousand dollars today off an eight or nine thousand dollar tax bill. It's not really helping. And if we could raise this, you know, by even if, you know, the coal it turns out to be a hundred dollars a year. It, it helps the veterans. And so if the town accepts um, MGL Fifty-Nine, Section Five, Clause Twenty-Second I, capital I, would be able to offer that starting in fiscal twenty-six. Um, so that's, that's Article Seven. Uh, Article Eight is uh, basically, and we need to change the motion wording, Tom, and should I send the new wording to you?
Um, yeah, if you could send it to myself, Dan, um, and Jeremy.
Yep. Uh, Dan, um, buyer?
Yeah.
And also, also, also Ellen Agro.
Okay, because I could get that out tonight. Basically what this one does is it takes the veterans' benefits you offer. And it allows you to increase them by, by up to a hundred percent. Um, and the motion does not reflect that. So the motion would actually say, I moved it to town vote to accept the provisions of MGL Chapter Fifty-Nine. Section Five, Clause Twenty-Second J, uh, enacted as section yada, yada, yada. Um, which provides for an additional hundred percent um, increase in the exemption. Um, that's covered by these, which is um, clauses twenty-two, twenty-two, capital A, capital, and capital B. And we do know the cost of that. Again, this would start in fiscal twenty-six. And based on the number of people getting it this year, uh, that would cost an additional eighteen thousand, one hundred fifty dollars. Which has come out of the assessors overlay account. So it's increasing the base amount. And if both go, you'd increase the base amount and then also get a coal every year. But it's, it's simple. We're trying to provide the, the veterans everything we can. And it's important to note that um, at age seventy, I'm the last year of the draft for Vietnam. So anybody under the age of seventy who served, served as a volunteer. And I know all three members of the board feel that we should give these volunteers, you know, everything that we possibly can under the law. Um, because, you know, they basically volunteered. And I would tell you, the, the majority of the veterans we're seeing are Afghanistan and, and uh, subsequent Middle Eastern activities. And these people are in their thirties and forties. So that's, that's the quick explanation of the, we're just trying to increase what the, the veterans could get in exemption and you know, cope with twenty years of inflation by raising them.
Yeah, Kiva, could you just let me know what the difference in the motion language was? Because this was already approved by council. So I just want to make sure I understand what your proposed difference in the language is.
Okay, the motion doesn't, okay, accepting the article allows us to increase the existing exemptions by up to another a, a hundred percent. The motion didn't say that. The motion just said it provides for the exemption, exemption. So if we don't put the percentage we want to increase it now, we'd have to go back to a subsequent town meeting and add it in. Because it never mentioned that we want to double it. Let's say we only wanted to raise it by fifty percent. The motion, we need to say that. So the motion does not specify the percentage.
The motion says provides for an additional exemption which shall not exceed one hundred percent of the exemption.
But that doesn't set the percentage. That means that.
Sorry, gone.
It says you could go up to a hundred percent, but it doesn't specify what the percent is. And we have to provide this to the DOR, and the DOR would kick it back and say, well, what percentage are you giving? So we need to specify in the motion that we're going to increase it by the hundred percent, not up to a hundred percent.
Is that, is that a town meeting decision or is that a select board decision?
It's a town meeting decision. Select Board has nothing to do with exemptions.
Okay.
So it's a state law and we have to accept it. But we need to tell the Department of Revenue by what percent from zero to a hundred are we going to raise it? We just can't say up to a hundred. They're going to say, is it a hundred twenty, is it a hundred thirty? So I'm just going to finesse the wording. So it specifies to the voters that they're voting to double it.
So to be clear, in this motion, you're essentially replacing which shall not exceed with shall be hundred percent of the exemption.
Yeah, so the voters know what they're voting on.
Okay, so instead of no, shall not.
We don't, we, we don't have the power. If we accept the law the way the motion's written now. We have not decided, town meeting has not decided what percentage to give. And the assessors do not have the power to say, let's make it thirty percent more or forty percent more. The voters need to specify that when they accept the, the, the uh, state law. So all I'm going to do is change the last wording by, by something and uh, so we get in that percentage. Because the more I look at it this week, I'm going, it's something wrong with that. I sat down and looked at it this morning really hard. I said, it doesn't say what percentage. It says up to. And the DOR gets very dicey. Would, if you did that, they'd say you need to revote it at the, the annual next year.
No, it's, it's correct. Can confirm in dealing with the DOR every day.
Yeah, as you, as you know, Tom, from your job, they control our lives.
Yes.
And I could already hear them, I could already hear them, you know, uh, getting the phone call going, you didn't vote this right.
Yep, yep, no, I, I hear you.
And what they did is they gave a template vote and we gave you the template motion. But I actually pulled them up today and said, your template motion is incorrect. And their lawyer looked at it and said, oh, yeah.
Okay, um, well, thank you. So just to be clear to everyone, and also these both are simple majority votes.
Um, yeah. So if, if nobody has questions, I'm going to get, get off the call now and I'll go right, we're changing mail it to everybody.
Sounds good to me, Kevin. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Okay. David, we're adjourned.
What was that?
I'm just telling Chief Curzy, we're adjourned.
Uh, you, you called your meeting and we're recorded. So if you could, and we're a remote. So if you could roll call vote to adjourn, that would make my life easier.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I second. Uh, Rodney.
Curzy, I.
Okay, we're, we're at an eight or four.
Thank you both.
Yep, and I'll get that wording to you right now.
Appreciate that.
All right, so we did nine, ten, eleven. Um, we're on to twelve. Now, um, it's, many of these are just simple, um, I, guys, I apologize, my dog is not appreciative of me being on this meeting tonight. So she's trying to be as disruptive as possible. So if you see her jumping up on me, licking me, um, making noises at me. She, she doesn't like when I talk to people and not her. So I apologize. Um, but um, for all these transfers from free cash, we, we, we kind of already discussed the reason this is happening. So we don't have to, um, we don't have to go over that again. And I'm going to say, you know, um, in the interest of time for tonight, if you want to just give a quick briefing of the amount and, and just a quick why on each one.
Sure, sure. Yeah, I won't, I won't go through detailed merits as um, the select board is, is well aware. Uh, and FinCom, I think Mike Crager and I have had almost nine hours worth of discussion on these now in the past couple of weeks. Um, so I'm just going to go through the, uh.
Right, and if anybody, we could kind of treat it like we would the budget. If anybody wants to hold one of these and, and discuss one of them, please feel free to raise your hand and we will. And just, yeah.
Yeah, go ahead. So this is uh, in the Highway Department, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. We have a, a, a almost twenty-year-old sweet, street sweeper that requires maintenance and does not provide a, a safe operating um, uh, habitat for, for the operator. Um, so this is to replace a sweet sweeper, which we need to use twice a year for our stormwater permit. And then we use on an emergency basis as well, uh, for roadway, for roadway incidents. Um, so FinCom recommended that five to one. And yeah, if I didn't say it, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. This is three hundred thousand dollars for the Providence Street culvert replacement uh, for engineering. So as, as most folks know, when this washed out in December of twenty twenty-three, it caused a massive inconvenience in terms of, um, in terms of infrastructure and folks commuting. Um, so this, uh, we've already allocated seventy-five thousand dollars for the American Rescue Plan Act for the preliminary engineering to decide how we're going to do it and its finality. Um, so this funds the engineering piece, uh, which then opens up the ability to apply for some grants. Um, and then we have a series of funding pieces um, to do the ultimate um, repair later. But that will require town meeting votes at, at a, at a future date. This is three hundred thousand dollars for the start to finish engineering work that opens up the grant opportunities. I think that's, that's the, that's the key piece for us. Uh, unanimously recommended by FinCom. This is two hundred thousand, two hundred fifty thousand dollars for roadway repair and maintenance. Um, so last, I think it was annual town meeting. Um, the town voted to use two hundred fifty thousand dollars from a land sale account to supplement the roughly two hundred and seventy, two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars we get in Chapter Ninety, which is the state funding mechanism for road repair and replacement. Um, this would again, for the second year augment it. Um, um, you know, again, almost doubling what we spend on roads. Um, so uh, making sure that we don't just focus on one capital project, but we focus on, on all sorts of needs around the town. Uh, unanimously recommended by Finance Committee. Um, this is sixty-three thousand dollars to uh, replace a police cruiser and the associated equipment. Uh, I know Chief Curzy's on now. He'll address this with uh, with greater detail at town meeting. Uh, but this essentially, we have police cruiser replacement within uh, the general fund. This accelerates it a little bit and helps replace some administrative fleet that is nearing end of life and is not part of that replacement uh, piece. Finance Committee unanimously recommends that. Um, Article Sixteen is sixty, sixty thousand dollars for approximately twelve thousand feet of uh, hose in the fire department. So right now, the fire department has hoses of different makes, models, um, useful lifes. Uh, utility, applicability, all sorts of stuff. It's a, it's kind of a hodgepodge. Um, so they've standardized their nozzles and then they now want to standardize their hoses. Um, the useful life of a fire department hose is greater than a decade. The chief calls it decades. But um, in my experience, want to be a little more conservative and say greater than a decade. Um, so sixty thousand dollars to standardize hoses across the fire department. And there is some salvage trade and resale value for the existing equipment. Um, and that will be surplus through a select board's uh, surplus vote. Um, this is for a fire department. Uh, Article Seventeen is a fire department administrative vehicle. So this is, um, right now, the fire chief has an SUV where he keeps his firefighting equipment. Um, which is laden with the, uh, you know, fire retardants that the um, departments use. Um, PFAS ridden, carcinogenic ridden, and it's in the passenger compartment of his vehicle. So this would be to get uh, the chief a, uh, and because he's twenty-four seven, right, he drives this around all the time. Um, this would to get a pickup truck and he could put his gear in the cab and remove that from the passenger compartment of his vehicle. Um, and then rotate that through the administrative fleet um, to um, a vehicle where we wouldn't be having firefighting equipment in the passenger cabin. Uh, we have some debate um, on internal combustion engine versus electric engine, uh, or electric vehicle. Um, which, uh, electric motor, which um, you know, will be taking on both a finance and operational uh, decision-making. It's not just the cheaper of the two, it's what works for us. Um, and then being financially responsible within the operational needs. Article Eighteen, uh, the, uh, sorry, I forgot to say the Finance Committee unanimously recommends that as well. Uh, Article Eighteen, uh, the Highway Department currently has two vastly um, inadequate storage facilities for its um, roadway signage. Um, and this would essentially build a, build a pole barn uh, to keep, which would be secure and have electricity in ways that its current facilities do not. Um, sixty thousand dollars for the materials um, and the site work and, or materials and the labor. And we would, we would do the site work in-house. And the Finance Committee unanimously recommends that. Article Nineteen, um, so this is um, to fund labor contracts. So there was a reserve in the fiscal twenty twenty-five budget. Um, labor contracts required an additional appropriation, will require an additional appropriation outside of that. So this is seventy-six thousand dollars to um, to fund the labor contracts in twenty twenty-five. Um, I said earlier as part of the free cash discussion that part of it was one time. Uh, I identified a few hundred thousand dollars there. Um, and then part of it was structural stuff that we know happens year over year. Um, so the way we kind of split and think about these things is, is we're using the structural piece to fund these structural ongoing expenditures. You're muted, Tom.
The next, or sorry, I'm raising my hand because the next article is, but these have all been simple majority votes. Next article, Article Twenty is a two-third vote. So we can, if we want to keep going with twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, and then tw- uh, twenty-five to uh, twenty-eight, just to talk about these free cash ones really quick. And then we can go back to the ones that aren't part of this series.
Okay, great. Um, so this would be uh, using free cash. Finance Committee unanimously recommends it with one abstention. Uh, we'll skip over twenty, uh, twenty-one, forty thousand dollars for fire turnout gear. This is their gear that you think of seeing a firefighter in. Um, we're going to get its annual tenure replacement into the general fund. But this is um, accelerating, getting two sets of turnout gear for firefighters. So six of our twenty-five firefighters have turnout gear right now. Um, and we're, this is to purchase an additional six, so they can respond to events while their gear is going through gear extraction. This is forty thousand dollars for FinCom reserves. This is to kind of fix stuff at the end of the year. And if it's not used, then it, again, sorry, FinCom unanimously recommends that with one abstention for the fire department gear. Um, this is uh, FinCom reserves for the end of the year to fix stuff, like I said. Um, and if it's not used, it falls back to free cash. It requires a FinCom and select board uh, vote to use. Yeah, I'm so recommended. Um, this is a police and fire liability insurance. This is a bill that was already incurred and was not budgeted enough in, in fiscal twenty-five and is a, of utmost importance to the operations of the town. Um, so we paid for it out of a not quite appropriate account. And so we need an appropriation um, into this account to, to fully fund it. Um, and I'm working with our insurance broker to make sure it's fully funded in fiscal twenty-six to begin with. Finance Committee unanimously recommends that. Um, select boarders, it's by anticipation that select board will vote to pass over this. Uh, we have found uh, existing resources with which to fund this, which was not apparent um, at the creation of the warrant. So um, we've already had a discussion on passing over. Um, Recreation Field Committee is a committee that the select board stood up recently um, to address a, a vocal and pressing need within town. Um, it is a complicated um, legal engineering design question. And this would be to um, provide some technical assistance to the committee. Uh, twenty thousand dollars, Finance Committee recommends that five to one. Um, this is, um, I want to address this one specifically because there's been some questions on this. So this is redesigned services for the Menden Community and Senior Center. So this is redesigned services between May and November. This is, um, as folks would like to say, the accordion process of taking the original design. As folks would like to say, the accordion process of taking the original design and shrinking it down and getting a smaller number to take to voters in the community. These are services that have already been rendered. And were voted on in a way that didn't allow access to the funds in fiscal twenty twenty-five. So we have bills outstanding right now. They're not those of a prior year. They're bills of fiscal twenty twenty-five, but we don't have an appropriation to pay them. So this is not a response to the November fifth vote. This is not a redesign. After November fifth to try to bring something else back. This, these are services that have already been rendered. So eighty-five hundred dollars to 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 pay for these services. Again, the Finance Committee unanimously recommends that. Twenty-seven is a central building maintenance account, thirty thousand dollars. So we have a thirty-five thousand dollar account right now, and this would bolster that. This is essentially taking care of equipment that we already have. This is investing in deferred maintenance. This is doing small stuff that doesn't quite make it to our capital projects list on a. Kind of ongoing basis, rather than getting a specific appropriation for, you know. Repairing a a a four thousand dollar list or something, something that we should, that we should be doing on an ongoing basis, but we don't. We don't have a specific appropriation for it because we didn't know it was going to break. And again, if this isn't spent, it will fall back through to free cash, just like everything else within the fiscal twenty-five budget, and Finance Committee recommends that five to one. This is a smaller appropriation into meetings and dues. So the meetings and dues, this would support townwide. It's in the Select Board account, but it supports townwide. It's one of my. Prerogatives to be able to support employees. In in their professional development, so that includes me, that includes the executive assistant, and that includes anybody else in town who says, hey, here's this. This course I want to go to, and they don't have a specific appropriation to it. I think investing in our staff's professional development not only makes them better employees and execute their job better. But it makes them want to stay, and there's a super big cost to turnover and churn. So investing in our own employees and their development is good for both them and the town. This is a relatively small amount compared to some of our other appropriations, but I but I think it's important to the development of staff. And Finance Committee unanimously recommends that three thousand five hundred dollar appropriation. That's not a free cash one. I'll come back to that. And easement.
I think there's, I think that's all the free cash ones. I think so. We have to go back to article twenty. So all the free cash ones, do we have any questions on those?
No.
Okay, so all those are simple majority votes. Article twenty.
So this keys off of article nineteen. So and it keys off of annual time meeting. So annual time meeting voted a town clerk salary that did not involve a cola at all. So article nineteen funds a cola for the town clerk. And this is the procedural vote to set. Her salary, the position salary equal to a cult. With a cola equal to our other collect, our other non-union positions and our collective bargaining agreements.
Perfect. Thank you. This is actually a. This is actually a two-thirds vote. Okay. So. I think we we're going to article twenty-nine, which is the rescinding of appropriation.
Yeah, so this one. In. Annual town meeting in the spring. Voters did. Did a great job in. Establishing an enterprise fund for the municipal solid waste program. So it takes, right now. If you think of the general fund as this this pot of money, all the municipal solid waste money go. Fees go into the general fund and then all the expenses come out of the general fund. But any difference, any any deficit that needs to be made up or any surplus that is. Had that falls through to free cash and then is used for any lawful municipal purpose. What an enterprise fund does, it says. Let's segregate those revenues out and put all the municipal solid waste revenues into this separate fund and have all the expenses come out of here. And that way, if there's a surplus there. Only the people who paid those. Fees and who are part of that program benefit from it. So all all fee payers are taxpayers, but not all taxpayers are fee payers. So we wanted to keep the benefit of those surpluses with the fee pair. It's how. You know, water and wastewater systems are organized across the Commonwealth, and it's a really great way to organize a municipal solid waste program. The problem is that at annual town meeting, there was a vote to both appropriate. The funds into the enterprise fund and appropriate the funds into the general fund. So we've double counted this revenue. So what we've done operationally is just. Not pay attention to the enterprise fund. We have not recognized any revenue there. We've not paid any expenses there. There are zero in, zero out. And everything has been happening in the general fund, just has been happening for a, you know, decade. What? And we need to fix this one way or the other. So if this article fails, we will call a special town meeting solely to fix this again. That we can't, we will not get our tax rate approved. If we do not fix this revenue in one way or the other, because we have appropriated the same six hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars into both the enterprise fund and the general fund. So so what this does is it doesn't. It doesn't. Remove the enterprise fund. What it does is it removes the appropriation into the enterprise fund because we're already recognizing on the general fund. I've had discussions with the health admin and the Board of Health, and we're saying we're going to continue fiscal twenty twenty-five on the general fund. And then fiscal twenty twenty-six, we're going to start fresh and everything's going to go into the enterprise fund. Because otherwise it'd be kind of an accounting nightmare to move everything.
You have to put them in gateway separately and. Right.
Right, I I sometimes I sometimes forget that I'm talking to a treasurer collector as well. So it would, it would, yeah, we, we can't do it.
I'm actually, yeah, I mean. We have to listen some things in. The town where I'm employed too, because similar things going on, so I get it.
So so I I want to say this is this is an accounting. This is kind of a paper exercise. This is not changing. Any of the fees, any of the user experience, any of the operations of the fund. This is to tidy up things on the backend and. And no one will have any any different of a of a user or customer experience because of it.
Yeah, it's housekeeping. And it requires a simple majority vote as well. So. That is article twenty-nine. Any questions? All right, article thirty. Grant easement to National Grid.
So this, the school department has a lease at the Clough School. The Select Board approved an amendment to that lease or. Approved the school department to make an amendment to the grounds to install an electric vehicle charger and now National Grid through their. Third-party needs and easement to be able to, you know, make that operational and and get and get power to it. So it's a no-cost easement. And why this isn't loading for me. This is. This is their plan to bring it in off of a pole there and go over to the charger. So this is no-cost easement to the town to install an electric vehicle charger at Clough School.
Okay. Article thirty-one, also that last vote requires a two-thirds vote as well. As this one, article thirty-one.
Article thirty-one would allow town meeting to not bother with articles nine, ten, and thirty. So this was suggested to us by Town Council to say if there, this is something that town meeting, when you devote each individual year. But if there is a easement that has no. Financial impact, so something like that. Electrical vehicle charger, something like accepting the easement on private property for our trail development. That Select Board can can accept that without coming to town meeting. And this, this is something that a number of other towns do, including Natick, which is where we kind of took the language from.
Okay, and this will require a two-thirds vote as well. Any questions about this article? Not, that's the warrant.
One more.
Oh, we got, we got one more. Okay.
This one would change. Chapter two, section one of the general bylaws. Right now, annual town meeting is tethered to the first Friday in May. This would say is change it to the first two weeks of May. But to make sure it happened before the annual municipal election in May. So to give Select Board the, in the town, the the flexibility to to not be tethered to a single day, but still be in in the in early May.
So that will. That will give us. More than ample time to fulfill our. Obligations as far as the state's concerned. Those first two weeks.
Yeah, and the way that chapter two, section two is written, where it says the. Election must recur eleven days after the first Friday. It actually tethers it to essentially the first week. So if there to be future changes on the municipal election, that would give us a little one more week of flexibility here, but. As it's as it's written right now, it's essentially, instead of the first Friday, it can happen with before town election, whatever that is.
Okay. Sounds good. And actually. Since it's a general bylaw. Change, it just requires a simple maj, simple majority vote. And there's no more, right?
That that is the last one.
Yeah, I was just going through Karis's list of what the. Vote majorities, for some reason, thirty-two is left off, but. That one's an easy one. Any questions about the process in general from anybody here tonight? All right. Thank you all for coming. Deciding to spend your Thursday night with me. This is going to be going up on YouTube. So people can review ahead of town meeting. Again, my goal is to for people to go into town meeting more informed. And have as smooth a meeting as possible, so.
To to that, to that end, Tom, my. I'll commit to it publicly. My 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 hope in future town meetings, I won't pick a specific one, but to have kind of an information to voters sort of packet. So. Similar to this, what we're looking at here, which has dollar values and rationale and Finance Committee recommendations. My hope is to have that out to voters in advance of town meeting. So rather than just the page or two of articles which don't give the specificity which we covered tonight. Voters will have that kind of in hand before they attend town meeting.
Um, I I have a question. Is there any possibility of putting this information? Like the articles with the motions and and also the Finance Committee recommendations on the town website ahead of Monday?
It's currently. It's currently on the town website. So if you. Yeah, so if you, this document that I am sharing on the screen right now, if you go to the to the town website. It's it's associated with this meeting. We can make it, we can make it more prominent, certainly, and I'll share it on the town Facebook page.
Yeah, that way. Yeah, that's an awesome addition to town, I must say. Have everything centrally located on one Facebook page like that. Yeah, if we could get that on just the document itself on the Facebook page, and that way we can just put post on the. Some of the Facebook groups people frequent like the Menon Bulletin Board and Menon Up to Moms and Dads. That'll be awesome.
Yeah, it's now a public document, so we can, we can share it.
Sounds good. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone. I will see you on Monday night.
Thank you.
All right. Have a great night, everyone.